Monday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, City Council Regular Meeting. Everyone will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Maybe, yes. Mayor King.
Here.
Councilman Niner.
Here.
Councilman Newberry.
Here.
Councilman Emo. Councilman Duma.
Here.
Coram being present, if everyone has had an opportunity to review the agenda, are there any objections to the agendas presented? Hearing no objections, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. If the council has had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any objections to the consent agenda as presented? Hearing no objections, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. I have a proclamation here in a minute, but I'm still signing. Give me just a second. I'm multitasking. All right, next item we have is a recognition for the twenty-twenty-five track team. Who from the track team is here? Come on up! Ed, I gotta read this whole thing, it's horrible, just be patient, all right? Whereas the Pleasant Hill High School Girls Track and Field Team displayed exceptional talent, dedication, and sportsmanship throughout the twenty-twenty-five season, earning numerous medals and accolades, representing Pleasant Hill with pride and excellence. And whereas, the team worked hard throughout the season, claiming numerous medals and team finishes, including multiple first and second-place team finishes at regular season meets, culminating in a first-place team trophy at the MRVC West Conference Meet, where they earned a total of twenty medals. And whereas, at the Class Four District Seven Championship, the team achieved a commanding first-place finish with sixty-three point lead over the second-place team, securing nine gold, four silver, and six bronze medals. Whereas at the Class Four Sectional Four Meet, the team earned four gold medals, three silver medals, and four bronze medals, once again affirming their dominance and multiple individuals and team qualifying for the state championship. And whereas, each member of the state team qualified by virtue of their performance in the district competition, including, and if I mess up anybody's name, I apologize upfront. Brooke Beck, Lilian Brock, Chloe Constant, Ella Crane, Julia Hamilton, Riley Hayes, Rowan Hayes, Charlie Herlock, Laura Erwin, Carolyn Kim, Sidney Kohler, Laney McDaniel, Adeline Miller, Mary Miller, Jordan Sheets, Emerson Smith, and Avery Van Der Veen. That's a bad name that's in there. And whereas at the Class Four State Meet, the team earned an impressive fourth place overall, led by standout performances, including a first-place finish in Class Four Record in the four-hundred meter by Brooke Beck, a second-place finish in the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay by Jordan Sheets, Laura Erwin, Rowan Hayes, and Brooke Beck, a third-place finish in the eight-hundred meter by Brooke Beck, a fourth-place finish in the three-hundred-meter hurdles by Laura Erwin, a fourth-place medal in the discus throw by Julia Hamilton, a fourth-place medal in the javelin throw by Laney McDaniel, and an eighth-place finish in the two-hundred meter by Brooke Beck. And whereas, the team is led by head coach Patrick Dent, with support from the boys' head coach John Hamilton, and assistant coaches Jeff Harden, Brett Reeves, Kyle Roach, Andrew Schoenher, and Luke Woodall. And whereas, these women have not only achieved success on the track, but have also served as role models for their peers, ambassadors for the Pleasant Hill community through dedication, teamwork, and perseverance. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that Mayor John King and the Pleasant Hill City Council recognize and commend the Pleasant Hill High School Girls State Track Team for their extraordinary achievements during the twenty-twenty-five season and extends its deepest appreciation and congratulations for their hard work, dedication, and standing representation of our community. Any comments for you guys and for everybody on here? You're in charge of this.
Okay. I already told them, I'll see you then tomorrow, so we'll get the rest today.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Summed up that whole year right there.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. If you would like to address counsel, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm gonna go forward. Hi, Jennifer Rue, People's Theater. Last time I was here, I talked to you a little bit about just helping out, you know, supporting the theater. I just wanted to give you an update. Things are still not great, but they are looking up. We've added lots of shows, we did dueling pianos. More fun was had than, people don't even remember that night, let's put it that way, it was that fun. So, we have on the schedule, we have a tribute to Bad Company, we just did a great collab with the city, we did a film, Free to the Community, we did, what did we do? The Parent Trap. And there were a hundred and, I think, thirty-six reservations, I think we had about seventy people show up, but a lot was going on downtown, so. Free tickets to the community, and we are willing to, you know, collab with the city anytime on films, Free to the Community, and we're reaching out to some other groups to sponsor movies. And the Big Creek Country Show continues, for now, it's kind of, you know, like every other weekend or something like that, and we're kind of working on updating the country show a little bit, so that we can kind of continue that. You know, the, I mean, people are gonna flip out if the Big Creek Country Show, you know, is gone for good. I mean, we're gonna probably see our own little, you know, L.A. riot here, so. So we're trying to kind of keep that going, but update it a little bit. George R. Buckle has been kind of there a few times, he's a guy from Pleasant Hill, he's been recording in Nashville, so. Just trying to get the word out that we're doing everything, we're participating in two events for the fair, beauty fashion, I guess, and then something else. Sorry, Queen, is it the Queen?
July ninth.
Yes, July ninth, and then something else, one of the groups, like speaking.
Four-H speaking.
Yeah, Four-H speaking, we're donating to our space for them, so they can do it in a nice big space, so. But I just wanted to give you an update and just let you know that, yes, we're still plugging along and, you know, watch the schedule for new shows coming up. Yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Ed, come on up, I know you wanna talk.
Okay, I didn't know exactly who. I have a shortage of things to say. I was trying to make a few notes, I apologize if I'm a little disjointed.
Ed, I flipped that mic, I'll switch the background for you.
This way?
Yeah. Thank you.
I want you to address the council, basically, I understand that on the agenda later on, a workshop or something, that there's up for discussion about moving our municipal court perhaps to the Circuit Court in Harrisonville. And having been coming to Pleasant Hill Court, I think the first time I came to Pleasant Hill's court was either nineteen-seventy-seven or seventy-eight. Met in the basement of the Memorial Building, and there's probably fifteen cases on the docket. Now, this is many, sometimes it's three hundred. The city's growing, the city has a lot of things going on, and there's a lot of activity in the court system. I understand we're losing our clerk, I've known Whitney forever, she used to be in the courthouse in Cass County before she came here. She's had a few things happen in her life lately that money's more important to her now than it used to be, maybe, so she had to do what's best for her in fact. You got a really good prosecutor. She does a really good job, and you got a judge, and I understand Roger's not quite as old as I am, but he's facing retirement one of these days, and I've known him for forty years, picking up. But what I wanna talk to you about is the impact on the city, the impact on the citizens. Court starts over here officially at six o'clock. Prosecutor gets there about four-thirty, clerk gets there about four-thirty, the judge comes in at five o'clock. The lawyers know that, we get our cases in and out a lot of times. And usually by the time when the court starts at six o'clock is when the trials start, and that's where you, people have a wreck on the corner, there's a barking dog somewhere, there's weeds that are too tall, there's a junk car sitting somewhere. And some people wanna contest whether or not they actually deserve the ticket they got. But all your officers are there, the judge doesn't get there till five, court doesn't start till six, the officers get there at five-thirty or so, they're just there for six, trials are usually over in an hour. And everybody's real close on time. If they need something, if they forgot something, and they do, we're all human, they just run over to the police station and get it, it's a short walk, they're back before you know it. And everybody goes home by seven, okay? I try to get out of there by six, just because I've got other things to do. What happens when you move it to Cass County is you get mixed in with, oh, on a docket with four or five other small cities that have done that. You end up with a whole docket last all the way till noon, sometimes two o'clock in the afternoon. They all get mixed together. You never know when the trials are gonna start, there's officers sitting around everywhere, from all the small towns, waiting on their cases to call. But some of the biggest impact is on the citizens. You get a person that gets a ticket here in Pleasant Hill, they don't have to take off work, court doesn't start till six, they can come down later, they can deal with it, good or bad, whatever happens, it's on their tongue. You move it over there, and then everybody's gotta take off work, because they gotta be over there at nine o'clock in the morning. They don't know exactly how long they're gonna be, so they end up picking the whole day off. I've had too many clients on other cities, I asked them, said, "Well, I didn't know what was gonna happen, so I took the whole day off." The other impact is also on your witnesses. The person that was fortunate enough to see the accident up in front of Price Chopper, he has to go testify about what he saw, he has to take off work. We all have barking dogs in the neighborhood, and those people that don't like dogs that bark all night, rather than coming up after a day's off work, they gotta take off a day's work, go to Harrisonville, sit all day to complain about the neighbor's dog in the parking. So the impact on the citizens is tremendous, you don't recognize it from here. The impact on the city, you had a, you had a really good clerk. She knows a lot of other good clerks. Our prosecutor knows a lot of good clerks, I know a lot of good clerks. Finding a clerk to replace her won't be that difficult. But what happens, she's always there to answer calls, she's always there when lawyers call, citizens call, ask questions, she's there to answer the question. When it moves to Harrisonville, there's nobody there to answer the question. So then they start calling City Hall again. Then a lot of times, I promise you what they're gonna do, start calling the prosecutor. So then your prosecutor's taking calls all day long about when's the case set, when's the court start, all that other stuff. And that impacts her job, it impacts what she does, it affects her job. So, I guess what I'm saying, for the benefit of the citizens, it's much handier to have a court here. They don't have to take off work, you know, it's bad enough to get a ticket, it's worse enough to take off a day's work, you go find out, you gotta pay the city a fine anyway. And any of those people that are witnesses, people that are complaining, you know, it's just easier on them. It's easier on the staff, it's easier. Plus, the thing, I guess, that's as important as anything to me, is being in control of the situation. You dump it off over there to the Circuit Court, and I know all the places, not very many were there like they used to be, they have a high turnover. They have a lot of cities to deal with. Some I'm kidding, tell you where Price Chopper is in Pleasant Hill, and it's not high on their agenda, I'm just being blunt, they got a whole day's worth of work to do, I talk to them every week, and I know. So, the impact on the city, I think financially, will probably increase your financial costs. I think it's gonna increase the cost for the officers, it's gonna increase the cost for your prosecutor, it's gonna be a burden on the citizens that I don't personally think they deserve, that take a day off, take two days off, three days off to handle a ticket. And those are basically the points. Judges, there's a lot of people, qualified judges, that like judges, judge jobs like this part-time. I think Roger hit seventy, he told me last month, and I can't remember exactly when. But, you know, between, he can tell you right now, three or four guys that would make a good judge for you, be able to work with you, be able to help the city grow. Roger came, I don't know, ten or twelve years ago, pick a number, more than that, twenty years ago. He now understands the city. He understands where all the streets are, he understands what's going on. And you can tell when he hears cases, you know, he's going, "Yeah, yeah, I know where that is." And you end up over there, we got great circuit judges. Municipal Court docket is the least thing on their agenda. It gets their least attention, it gets their least concerns, because they have to go there officially. So, I just think, I recommend that you leave it here, I think it's better for the citizens, I think it's better for the police officers, it's better for everybody, so. Do you have any questions? I've been doing this a while, I'll be happy to answer any questions you got.
Well, I knew you and I talked, so I'm just gonna reiterate this, but it's better for the police officers because they're spending less time at court, and they go over there.
I mean, well, I mean, I don't know what your arrangements are, you know, the chief can decide. But if they go over there for a trial, and the trial doesn't start till noon, but they get there at nine, they're gonna sit there until three o'clock, you don't have a car over there. It happens all the time when you're over there, there's officers sitting around waiting. Sometimes it's on the state docket, because a case got happened in Raymore that ended up on the state docket. But then there's a lot of small towns that have to send the officers over there, and they have to wait. And, I mean, that's your arrangement with them, it's up to you. Here, I've seen them, I've had them in my cases, prosecutor asks them for something, they go, "Oh, I forgot it, I'll run and get it." So we just sit there for a minute, officer runs over, gets them, comes back, hands it to us, and that's it. If they're over there, it's an hour drive. And it's just a lot handier for the people that have to do the work, it's a lot handier for the people that live here, I guess is all I'm saying. Does it really make a lot of difference to me? No, I'm gonna retire one of these days, I hope. But, but anyway, I just want to share my thoughts with you, I wanna thank you for your time, thank you for listening to me. If you have any questions, we have.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
John Self, two oh five South Campbell. I've been gone out of town for a while. I just wanted to say, thank you. I did not hear about any water line breaks. We had an oil war, but it was because you were doing maintenance. I enjoyed that oil war. I see a lot of work getting done on Seven Highway. I drove down the street for the first time in almost three months, down Seven. Didn't notice a manhole cover until I realized I didn't notice any manhole covers. So I wanted to say thank you to Tony for that. I see a lot of work getting done on the parks. I may not agree with how we're spending the money, but the work's getting done, and I'm appreciative of that. In that vein, I would like to ask, when are we going to start livestreaming these meetings? And why are we starting to do it? It seems to me like an ordinance to make that a requirement to have a meeting would be fairly simple. We did it during COVID, it didn't cost any money, there weren't any major technical challenges, and it got done. When I'm out of town, I don't know what's going on. Nobody in this town knows what's going on unless they come down here. Folks in wheelchairs ain't coming down here, folks on oxygen ain't coming down here. They don't know what's going on in their city. And I think you would get a lot better feedback from people, a lot more positive reinforcement, if people could see what you're doing all the time. A lot of the griping and complaining that I see and hear, and even sometimes dispels, is because things are done undercover of darkness. It's bright outside, but there's still darkness down here at City Hall. So my question is, when is it gonna get done? And that is a question I would like to answer to tonight.
We have discussions on it, we're continuing to have discussions. One of the things we have to get around is if you have a, livestream is easy, we can just livestream it. Public comment on livestream becomes a problem, because if you try to get in to make a public comment, and it won't let you, the accusation at cities is, "You did something to not let me speak." Or if you came up and gave a comment, and someone followed that online with a comment, that person can hide behind being anonymous. And they can say things about city staff, they can say things about things you said there, or anybody says. You have no recourse, no redress. Where a public comment, where people come in and make public comment, people are known. Those are the issues we have to work through to make sure that everything is fair for everyone, and that we cover those issues. There are many ways cities do the meetings with public comment, some do it as you have to give at least X amount of hours of notice that you wanna speak in a meeting, so that things can be on the, can be ready to go. There are cities that do it as you can email in comments, and they are read by the city clerk during public comment. There are many ways. So we are having these discussions, it's been ongoing, council has had discussions, and we are trying to figure out to do that for everybody, for fairness and equity for everybody. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts.
We did it during COVID.
And we had problems, and people were not allowed to comment, couldn't get in, there were connection problems. I think we had a couple meetings during COVID out of necessity. Again, it is coming, I can't give you a date then, but we are working on it.
Okay, I'm starting to feel like I'm being misled here, because I was told we'll record the meetings after we were not in council chambers.
We're not done.
We're not done, but we are recording meetings, we've had problems, we are working through them.
Last week's, your last session, got recorded? Is that what you're telling me?
So that is one of the challenges that we're working through, is that the Wi-Fi in this area is not consistent for us. So we were able to record bits and pieces, and there have been times where we've been recording, and we get maybe fifteen minutes in the meeting. And so we're able to do that consistently, there's no possible way that we can encourage people to join remotely. So we're still working through those issues.
Please release what you have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. First item for consideration is a special events application, farm-to-table event.
All right, so Lisa Hoffman, Willa Boutique, one sixteen South First Street, on behalf of PHHD. We have the farm-to-table event that we want to do for our community, that's kind of in tandem with our farmer's market team, and that is scheduled, we'd like to schedule it for September twenty-eighth, which is a Sunday. And it would require, the idea is, it's the longest table, it's an outside event, kind of in the evening, down First Street, all the stores are closed, pretty much on First Street, everybody except for Big Creek until like three. Verbally, we've been able to speak to most people, we'll get a sign off that they're okay with that, so they know in case they like to do after-hours work in their store, that that will be the farm-to-table event. And we would probably need to start setting up in the morning and everything, because it'll be really cool, the idea is like all these tables straight down First Street, kind of connection and that community appeal, so. And then obviously, we're trying to use as many of our vendors from our farmer's market and locally sourced items as possible, so.
All right, any questions from council?
So you don't have the signatures yet for the businesses yet to write on?
No, we will, yeah, we have most of them, yeah, yeah, Sunday they're exposed.
Who don't you have here?
Well, we don't have the bar, so we're figuring that out, and then we don't have the dentist, they're just closed on Sundays.
Right.
And I think Debbie, Debbie is missing still. She's participating, she's at the farmer's market, so.
Any further questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the special events application with the stipulation that all signatures have to be obtained?
I'll make a motion to approve the special events application contingent upon them getting all signatures.
I'll second.
Motion, second, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If a business is closed on Sunday, do they have to have their signature?
Well, we were gonna do that anyway, just.
I know, I understand.
We have historically so required, even if the business is closed.
I think out of courtesy, it's good, just because sometimes I do stuff in my store, you know, I usually know what's going on, but you know, somebody may not, you know, so I try to let them know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe they have it worked on or something like that, so.
Well, I mean, even for the dental office, they could have an emergency or something, dental emergency.
Yeah, for sure, so. Okay, great, thank you. Do you wanna do the next one, too?
Sure. Next item is a special events application for the homebrew competition.
All right, so same, Lisa Hoffman, Willa Boutique, one sixteen South First Street, on behalf of PHHD. So this is our second annual homebrew competition, we moved this one to the fall. Last year was in June, this year we're looking at October twenty-fifth. And for this one, we wanted to do the same kind of setup, where we had it in Gray's Lot, and we would need, just really all day, like starting at eight AM, we wanna get things set up, so that all of our participants can come, they're ready to go. This will be bigger, you know, bigger than last year, we're trying to, of course, every year, kind of level up and add more to it, more participants. We'll hopefully have some vendors also, so it's again kind of a festival feel, pretty much in the farmer's, or in the lot there, and Gray's Lot and the use of my lot as well. And really no street closures.
I would actually change that to Second Street. Julie Brown, I own three properties downtown, one seventeen First Street, one thirty-sixth First Street, and sixteen Veteran Park Place. I would actually request we close Second Street like we do on the farmer's market, because we do put a food truck there, and just keep a safe passageway between the parking lot and the Gray's Lot.
And that is reflected in there, it just says no street closures, other than the Second Street half closure that we already have for the gestrians, so. With this, too, last year we had a live ban, we'd like to continue that, have a live ban, so we would request if we could use the city's stage, and we could use the easy one, if possible, right? And of course, this is a, those activities are all free, to be a participant in a homebrew, there's a fee for that, but, just like last year. And then our actual event will start probably around three, concluding around nine.
What is the homebrew? I'm sorry, I missed it last year, so I don't know what it is.
Well, that's an opportunity for people who brew their own beer to compete. And it's a fun day, and they bring their brew, they have all, oh my gosh, they're so good, too, all different kinds, and it's amazing what they do, but anyway, so they participate, it's just a little competition, like instead of a chili cook-off, it's a beer competition.
So there'll be different prizes, I think the people who attend get to vote, so People's Choice Award, Masha, they had professional judges, we do, from legit beer people.
It's always to get, easy to get the amateur judges to volunteer, so, you know.
Cool.
We also chose because the weather's nicer. And to make it like a fall festival weekend, the night before is usually that trick-or-treat event, which I know the city did more add-ons to that last year, so. The homebrew is being addition, like a fall festival weekend.
The next night, the next day?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna be. Yeah, so it's almost like a two-day fun fest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, this is the same night as the Trail of Terror or anything? I don't know, we haven't had an application to do it yet for that, so I'm not sure. That would be my concern.
I was gonna say, based on best practice, likely, but yeah, they're right, we don't have an application for it yet, so.
And isn't that, just so, I've never done the Trail of Terror, but that actually starts on over by the tracks, right, by where Dragonfly and New York Park is at? Kind of this area here?
Yeah.
So ours is on Gray's and just in case you have never been to one, it's also like a ticketed event, you have to be 21 to participate to taste the beer. And so it's a secure area, you have to have a wristband, people are monitoring that, so in case there's some sort of concern around the Trail of Terror, Tears, Tears, what, Terrors?
Terrors.
It's a haunted trail.
It's a haunted trail.
Yeah, haunted trail, that I don't anticipate how that would ever interfere because we're so far removed from that. Personally, if having a business down there, I've never even seen the kiddos, you know, come down my area for that, so I don't think it's relevant, but just, you know, unless they were, unless for some reason they were thinking of stretching their event further into Gray's Lot, but there's been no application or request to do so, I would see how.
The only problem I see with it is after they leave the beer tasting, which is just a beer tasting and it's not a Halloween party, which is a little different, they have came up to the trail under the influence and then very, I believe, a trail, which that's the only.
Who has? Who's that?
The people that had attended a party.
Oh, a harry, not the homebrew.
It's not a beer tasting, that'd be the only thing.
We didn't have one then, okay. You're saying like just a general party goers, okay, well, okay.
Yeah, but that's the only.
And then last year, we didn't have any incidents in our event with anybody overdrinking, over serving, or nothing that stood out as a problem, but you know, you never know.
I understand we don't have an application for it yet, but that is just an ongoing fundraiser for the school, so I don't want to interfere with that. But I do understand they're separate areas, but I'm just putting all my concerns out there.
I think what would happen is if they put in for a similar date, we would ask them to, since they have a later application, to work with them to make sure there wasn't a problem.
I'm okay with that.
Not ask you guys to do that, since you have the first.
Well, it's easy, we want to support, like that's a school event, right? It's all for the school or something?
It's the show choir.
The show choir, yeah, for sure.
Need a motion?
Okay, I need a motion on the special events application.
I'll make a motion to accept the special event application for the homebrew competition.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, call in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, carries.
Okay, great, people hope to see you guys soon.
All right, next item is the 2025-2026 SRO contract.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is a continuation of our current contract, well, not a continuation, it's the renewal each year that we do. We are in possession also, we have approved, we signed contract by this, so this is the same agreement as last year and the year.
Any questions from council? Anyone from the public have a comment on this? All right, so I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 SRO contract as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-26 SRO contract as written.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, roll code, roll call vote please.
Councilman Nyah?
Yes.
Councilman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilman Doolan?
Yes.
Approved. Next item is Resolution 25-23, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute Change Order 1 with Earthworks, Excavation and Association for the Seven Highway Waterline Project.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I guess I'll take this one. We are, what we've discovered is a banned old steel gas main right where the water line has to go. So it's one of those unforeseen things that, you know, you don't know that they're there. What the contractor is doing, if you looked at the pitch or the changeover sheet, the dollar amount that's on there is kind of a worst case scenario, we're just guessing at how many feet we're gonna take out. So they're, they're just not charging $10 per foot. I talked to the contractor today and they've already gone out of it, they're got away from it, so they're not removing it right now. So they're just decontracting how many feet that they've had to remove, so that $20,000 would be a worst case scenario. The second part of the change order is it was an oversight by the engineers to have heavy material around the pipe. So we want to make a change order to go ahead and bed that pipe so it's protected with clean ground.
Any questions from council?
Oh, I should also mention that there is gonna be a couple of deducts that will be coming off at the end of the project as well. We're creating a mod, we are, they are not gonna require us to put the four inches of gravel back down for the sidewalks, they want us to just backfill it to grain, so that would be a deduct on the project. And then there was a couple of other material items that were probably gonna be taken out of the project. There will be some defense.
Any comment from the public on this resolution? All right, do I have a motion for Resolution 25-23, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute Change Order 1 with Earthworks, Excavation and Association for the Seven Highway Waterline Project?
I'll make a motion for Resolution 25-23, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute Change Order 1 with Earthworks, Excavation and Association for the Seven Highway Waterline Project.
It is, I was upset at that.
Have a motion, a second, on Resolution 25-23 as read. Can I get a roll call vote please?
Councilman Nyah?
Yes.
Councilman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilman Doolan?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving into staff reports. Missy?
Sorry, I'm just gonna hold this. I'll be honest with you, I've been working my tail all the last two weeks, but I couldn't tell you what a dark day it is. I've found some projects that have been pending out online, email and phone calls, all those things caught up. So that's what I've been doing the last two weeks, nothing, no major developments in the development side. I will say, Historic Preservation did hear a, sorry, an application for Alan Brown on the back of his building. It requested to remove a deteriorated, dilapidated, deteriorating wall in the back, so it's accessible from the alleyway. While they were shoring up to be able to remove that, it did collapse, they did take it down. The contractor did adequately clean up the property, shored up the building so that it did not collapse any further and put appropriate fencing around. So we heard that, it was approved for renovations and to be restored.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get, did they, the Historic Preservation do the Pleasant Hill Historic District?
Approved.
Approved.
On the.
Cause he goes.
Because they are to be on the agenda for July 7th.
Okay.
Along with, right now I have four other applications on that.
Oh, good.
Tammy?
Okay, we had some training with, I discussed all the, this expense point app that all departments are starting, should be using for their P card transactions instead of logging into computers and app on their phone. Been working on audits, supporting documents, the audit starts closely there, so. And I spoke with Joey, our financial advisor, about borrowing up some more money for more water sewer equipment bonds, so he's in the works on that, to the interest and what that would be. And then I have been working with our IT service regarding the wifi up here. They're trying to figure out if we have maybe too many connections, we have been in communications with them and they're gonna check it tonight to see what the issues are with that wifi issue.
Jeff? The most recent incident that we've had at pool, just want to let you, everybody know that there was a patron who had been banned from the pool for abusive behavior. Today they tried to return and pool staff and police were dispatched to react to this bit, so there is some public awareness that we need to make, I just want to get off the fair for that. We moved the last, actually the bathrooms for the parks, both the city park and the city lake are supposed to be being delivered this week hopefully, as long as the schedule maintains, they are inbound this direction now. By the way, we've seen a lot of action out at the city lake for the plumbing setups and the parks get the, in place now. So hopefully once those get set, we can get some move on the asphalt, parking lot, get those, they're supposed to be complete. And we've also been doing a lot of work down at the fairgrounds in collaboration with public works, with city staff and community volunteers, getting a lot of fairgrounds prep worked up and getting that ready for those for about this month.
Tony?
As you've seen, Seven Highway Waterline Project is moving along, contractors got roughly about 500 feet installed right now. What they're doing right is installing the main and then they'll go back and they'll start doing all the tie-ins, service connections and all that kind of stuff as they, after once all of it's installed. The pump house has come along pretty well now, as of last Tuesday, we fired up on the new pumps, we've been running them in hand or manual, so we have to shut them on off right now. Mike Con was there today to, to get some of the bugs worked out of the controls, getting everything to work as it's supposed to in auto, getting all of our YOWs per minute, PSIs and all that kind of stuff rearranged. We were down there most of the day today and they started to come back tomorrow or the next day, so they're still working on some of that. The, as far as the structure, guys are getting closer, there's still a lot of thing to be done. HVAC units get fired up, they're finishing up on the stairs and the landings, something like that, some of the deck. But it's coming along, we're getting there. Been working basically with Jason on our review of the design construction manual for the UDC, trying to get through some of that, making some of our additions to it before we, before the UDC is an issue. Like Jeff said, we've been working out the fairgrounds, put it together, making some good progress, it's actually looking pretty good, feel pretty decent. The other thing was I'm working on a little bit is starting to get our five-year plan, I shouldn't call it a five-year plan.
You can call it.
As Amy talked about, you know, getting some more funding, getting some more projects, waterline.
So don't take this as I'm complaining, because I'm not, but on the Seven Highway Waterline Project, you said you've done 500 feet, how much, how many feet do we have to do?
I think it was just under $4,000.
Oh, okay. I just had somebody the other day ask me, when are they gonna be done? I'm like, I don't know, but I'm just glad to see it's getting done, so.
It's, it's gonna be great.
Yeah.
Chief Ray? You know, for once, I really don't have a whole lot to say. I'm kind of somewhere between Missy and Tony, I've been busy but not blocking the reports. We did have our coffee with the cop at the VFW, it was the first time we did it there and we had an awesome turnout. I would encourage council members and members of the staff and the public to go out there to the VFW breakfast and their, and their taco night, they're an awesome group of folks and we love going out there, love supporting them, so. I don't really have anything other than we're doing a lot of emergency preparedness stuff for the fair, it kind of kicks in this time of the year and once it's over, we're all happy, but we do look forward to the fair, it's one of my favorite events, so. So that's all I got.
It was your first event here?
It was, I love the county fair, so.
Like right after you started too, wasn't it?
It was.
Golly.
Just kind of piggybacking off of everyone else, I've been working on the fair, public notification has been everywhere in the last few weeks with the water boil advisory and obviously with the holidays and things, reminders like that. I will make a note with the advisory, we used Everbridge to notify, so I know this time a lot of people said they did not get notified, that is because they do have to sign up for Everbridge. We had some people say they were signed up, it was because they were sent up in another city, so Everbridge wasn't noting that address to send them, so kind of working out some kinks with that, but that will be how we are sending out the emergency notifications, it seems to be the most efficient and effective. So I just wanted to, you guys to be aware that if you ever get that, they do need to sign up for it as well as make sure they have a Pleasant Hill address. They can have multiple addresses on file, but obviously the Pleasant Hill one will be flagged and you'll get the notification. But other than that, I can't really think of anything else, it's all been, posting ahead kind of a blur, it's a busy time of year, so.
And they can also add multiple phone numbers to that.
Yep.
Cause I got a text, an at notification and an email.
Yes.
Each time you guys sent something, so I think it hits everything.
Well, one of the reasons I like it as well is because the county also uses it, so you can sign up for the weather alerts, you can get alerts from the county, you can get alerts from us neighboring cities, so it's really a one-stop shop for emergency notifications.
Jody?
I don't have much to report, I've just been trying to get contact up.
Thank you.
I will, and I guess I'll just follow up real quick on Kylie's comment, you know, when we had kind of went to the Everbridge system, and Andy can probably attest to this too, so, you know, previously we have the ability to send out robo calls through like our utility billing software, but there are some real limitations to that when it comes to the federal, like communicate, like FCC, so they limit when those calls can be made. So like we found this out in one of our previous incidents where we'll put out a call at, let's say 9:00 at night, because that's when we need the information to get out. Well, they, they don't have the proper licensing for those calls to go out at 9:00 at night because of, you know, like, yeah, so it's just too confusing to then sometimes use robo calls, but then sometimes use Everbridge, where Everbridge has the licensing that allows, you know, emergency notifications to go out at any time. So that was one of the reasons for the switch, so if somebody said, well, I got in a robo call before, again, it's just, there's some limitations with that, so we tried to revert to this and also, you know, limiting when we send out calls for emergency purposes, I mean, that's what it is. I mean, we can send out maybe a robo call to say, hey, quick reminder, you know, another thing, but not on an emergency situation. So that was just a quick reminder of why that switch was made over. So we have completed what I would call our initial punch list walkthrough just at the rec complex. We did that last week, it was brutally hot, we tried to start earlier in the morning to get wrapped up. So obviously there's still some things to finish up out there, but it was good to go ahead and get the contractor working on some punch list things as we move towards our completion of those projects. With that being said, Jeff and I both have spent a lot of time out at the rec complex of evenings, so as you know, we are doing a lot of our rec programming out there on a limited capacity, just because early in our softball and baseball season, we had a lot of rain, so it was easier, we worked with the contractor to facilitate those games out there versus having to continue to cancel on dirt fields, that's the benefit of why we went with these turf surfaces. But with that, obviously the site isn't turned over to us completely, so Jeff and I have been spending a lot of evenings out at the rec complex, just ensuring the safety of our patrons and obviously the, you know, making sure people are staying out of the areas where they're not supposed to be, because obviously that's still in the contractor's hands. So that's just been an additional, some of my mornings, I haven't been in here as early because I've been out at the complex late at night. I guess that was my last name. Facilitating those unlimited opening. Our fair advertising is really underway, as Kylie said, from a social media standpoint. Last week I finalized the work with Steel City Media, which is Q104 and 106.5 for the radio ads, not only for the fair.
KFAR.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say?
106. 94.1.
Sorry, 94.1 and.
And Q104.
Q104, I apologize. We finalized the advertisement for the fair in itself and then also they've been working through all of our sponsors. That is, it's fair advertising, but as a sponsor, you get. That is, it's fair advertising, but as a sponsor, you get additional advertising for your business. It's kind of one of those things that both has kind of fair, you know, proudly sponsored by so and so. So I think we have pretty much all of those wrapped up. All of that begins the first week of July. Been to a transportation meeting, a Mark STP transportation meeting, and then we do have, oh, back to the fair. Missy and I have been obviously corresponding significantly with all of our volunteer chairman for each of the events, so to make sure all of their things that they have are taken care of. As Tommy said, Chief Wright, we did hold our emergency operations meeting. Again, we invite a lot of folks from outside of the community into the community, and so obviously, safety is a priority. There will be a few things we're going to change up this year just to get, enhance the, the safety and the security of all that are there attending and participating. And then we've done a lot of animal shelter reviews and I think Shelby will probably elaborate more to this, but don't forget, we do have our groundbreaking for the animal shelter tomorrow at one o'clock. We will have bottles of water there because it'll be hot.
Shelby.
I don't have much to elaborate on that one, other than tomorrow, we do have the animal shelter groundbreaking at one. We will have tents. I don't know how many tents we were putting on, but we said we would put up some tents. I don't anticipate this being like a huge mass event. It'll be, you know, turn over some dirt. Looking forward to it. They were, I have not seen it, they were supposed to have a sign that will stay on site during construction, but I hope you guys know that. Proud to report, and we just announced it today, that we did receive an AARP grant in the amount of $12,500, and this is going to be for additional seating and ADA picnic tables at city park and the recreation complex. So we're still trying to figure out what that, you know, what that ultimately looks like, what the placement will be, and it has to be completed by December. So we've been working with the vendor on what that could be. Another one, especially as Nikki and Jeff have spent a lot of time at the rec complex, a lot of our internal conversations right now are spent on outlining what our expectations are going to be for whatever parks open, how we're going to maintain them, what, how do we envision our operations changing as a result of it, and then what additional programming do we want to add to the parks? With that, internally, unless I hear otherwise from council, the parks, projects are progressing relatively well. We're still planning for them to be open at some point in July, probably after the fair, for a full opening. We've talked a lot about whether we wanted to do initial ribbon cuttings, like they're ready to go, or if we really view this as an opportunity to welcome people back to these parks in a new envisioned way with different types of events. And so I, that's probably where we're going to lean, that they will be publicly open, just you can go to them now, and then we'll do some events kind of through the later summer and into the fall. Unless you guys are like, yes, absolutely, we want to have a photo op ready to go, and we can knock that one out. So open to discussion on those, because we have not settled in on it. And one of the things Missy and I have been working on for the past couple of weeks is getting really closer to presenting you guys with the vacant building registry and what that looks like. Legal is working on some draft ordinance language right now. We went through and identified kind of what I envisioned to be a work session topic for you guys, like we'll come probably with proposed language, but then here are kind of the discussion points that we want to hear your input on, and then we can tweak the language after that. So that one I really anticipate may be available by the July 14 meeting. And then, one that I'm not overly thrilled to report is that we do have a leak at the swimming pool. We are still losing quite a bit of water overnight, so our staff has been researching what that is, but Jeff can speak to this better, but they kind of have to take down like certain pipes and isolate, so it may be a couple of weeks before we figure out if we have a better idea where, what's happening.
Yeah, so every night, Landon has been the point person on mostly, and what we do is we go in there and make sure everything's at the same baseline. So we use the auto fill system, get up at the same level every single night, and then we shut everything down with one, one system. And that way we're isolated and we're kind of troubleshooting and going through each individual system to see where we're hitting that loss at. We were hoping it was in the walls and in the hydrostatic valves, that would be easier for us to be able to fix. We know what that solution will be, but when we shut that system down, we got absolutely no measurable loss. So we're going through and looking at different piping systems now. We're like, having to isolate these systems, it's a tedious process and you can only do so many certain things at a time and kind of get any actionable knowledge. We've been working with Casey and I, and we've got a contact over there that we've been planning the preparation through, but we are about four nights into it because the weather events that begin at night, those completely speed the results. So whenever we start a test, if we get right in the middle of it, it scraps that night and then we start over again. So it is something that we're going through. After the pool closes at the end of the night at 10 o'clock each night, we go in and we start a test, run up to four hours, so we get that same measurable result, and we can actually magnify more, what loss of the day is, and calculate it that way. So it's a long process, it's probably going to be two or three weeks of exploration before we're able to know what is going on, but we're working on a solution now, so.
How many systems are there?
There's about five or six major systems, but we're testing the minors inside those, so we, we're testing, we're eliminating the majors, and if we can get rid of that group, it helps speed things up. But the ones that we were hoping to see the result on, that were isolated quicker, we didn't see results on those. So the ones that are underground and hidden under the concrete slab are the ones that we're kind of looking like it's, that may be where the problems at, so we're trying to figure out what we can do.
Where's the water ending up?
We don't know. It's making its way to the drainage system, so that's good and bad. It is going through the, through the relief system the way it's designed to, but it's getting into there from a way that we don't know how it's getting there. So trying to figure out what erosion is doing underground is the, the couple we're trying to figure out. We didn't have this last year, so it's a relatively new event. It was about four inches of, of loss at night, which is thousands of gallons. It's a lot.
Welcome to your first summer trip. Yeah, and discovered after it was closed and open, so really, great. So right now, I'm, I'm tracking what that means in terms of dollar amounts, and I'll let you guys know if I'm like, oh no, this is a big fact trouble. That number sounds bad in terms of gallons, hasn't been as bad in terms of cost. So I will keep you guys updated on how complicated that is. And my last one is really just a little bit of an update, kind of precursor to a future conversation. So the state legislature passed Senate Bill 3 during our special session, the governor did sign it. Senate Bill 3 has been, having our state rep here, he can probably speak to it even better. So Senate Bill 3 is relatively known as the stadium financing bill, but included within it is, you know, we've talked about the senior tax credit on their property taxes, a provision that Katz County could put, or I guess, there are certain counties that have caps on the amount of property tax increase that they could receive, like basically your assessment can't go up, like on how much you actually pay. Katz County is a zero percent interest county and zero percent increase county, and, but that has to go before the voters in a couple of years. So I've been working with many other cities on what is the financial impact of that. And I think the challenge with this is because the Hancock Amendment will always be adjusting what our property tax rate is, and so it's kind of an unknown, and so I'm still working on what that financial impact would be, and I'll just let you guys know whenever I, but it will be a while before I think it will be on the ballot on the Katz County. I want to say it's in 2026.
That's next, that's next year.
That's running, yeah.
That's next year.
I know.
Well, you said a couple of years, that's next year.
Sure. Sure.
That's less than a year.
Yeah, true.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Did we hear back from Mark, M-A-R-C, Mark, on the hazardous waste?
Yes, Nadja called me and basically we have not, because their meeting is in mid-July.
Okay.
And so we talked about it, she's firmly aware of what she's going to ask, and then I have on my calendar to call her the day after. She also must call me immediately after. Yeah, so.
Okay. Next question, and it's a multi-part question. Amy, when do water bills go out next?
Kylie, could you put together a small flyer to go in water bills that has all the different ways that you can connect to Everbridge, where to find the information, just an Everbridge flyer for emergency notifications, QR codes, where you find it on the city website, you know, little pointers, tips? I don't know if there's any other ways that people can do it other than those two ways? And there's an app, and the app store for it, that's where I got it.
I can, so this month is a printed newsletter month. We do one every quarter, and typically this month as well, we include the Katz County Fair brochure. So our folding machine does.
Oh, yes, too.
Yeah, so I was going to say, I can put it in the newsletter.
Okay.
Or we can take out the Katz County Fair brochure, but I mean.
Can we add it to the newsletter and then do another one later?
Yeah.
Individually, so that's all it is? Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, like Nikki said, we can do that at the end of July.
Put it in the newsletter this month and do a separate.
Just Everbridge.
Just an Everbridge notice at the end of July.
Yeah.
Because then July's will be just an online newsletter.
Well, I think it may even be better in July because we can get it printed kind of on like a postcard, so we can do super bright card stock, so it's not visible.
I just wanted them to know also the newsletter so that it's, it's that season, so. Chief, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can we put restrictions on people that get their permits to go door to door? Do you say that they cannot go after a certain time of night?
We already have that in ordinance, but any, any change to any of that would require.
What is the time on the ordinance?
I believe it's eight or nine.
Sunset, half hour before sunset.
Can we just put a time on it?
I mean, we could.
Apparently people are not listening to that.
No, and so I, I will tell, I will share this, I've instructed our staff at the police department that they are the ticket folks that are peddling without a permit, that are peddling after the hours. Nobody wants to be bothered at their house, especially during the after hours. So we have a permitting process in place, and if they can't figure that out, then they can solicit or peddle to somewhere else.
What about, is there any teeth to people that knock on your door anyway if you have no trespassing, no solicitor signs?
Yes, they're, they're obviously subject to citation. The problem becomes is most of those folks don't, aren't local folks. They are from out of town, out of state, so really the, the punishment for them, like they'll end up with a warrant, or they don't show up for court, but if they never come back, it's not that big of a deal.
Yeah, well, they, maybe they run them off too. And I just think that it's, for whatever reason, it's getting more aggressive.
It is, and, and so we've addressed it a lot in the last few weeks, and I put something out, but we are not collared peddlers that are outside the bounds of what our ordinance is and peddling without a permit.
Can we review those on the police department's social media that, hey, these are the, these are the rules, they're not supposed to be there after sunset, or however we want to, you know, whatever it states, and that if people are coming to their door and that kind of thing, that they can contact the police department and.
Absolutely.
I don't want to, I don't want to scare the poor kids selling stuff for the schools, but it's not them that are going to.
No, it's not.
Nine thirty at night.
It's not that.
Well, it's not when we're just walking around your yard, you know, this pest control company is going around your house and then coming up and knocking on your door.
After so many problems, can we yank their business or permit to do that?
Yes.
Can we get all more aggressive on that? And if we have problem companies, that we do that? I mean, I'm always about giving a personal warning, giving an opportunity to go right on it, but if they don't, then we just yank it. Anything from council?
I, I did have a question probably for Shelby about the, the parks, the rec complex and so forth. When you said about doing different activities, are you thinking like, I guess I'm just a little confused on what it is you're wanting to do. And let me tell, let me just give you a little piece of background. So my grandson's in fourth grade. He believes that there should be some kind of public awareness to, for like maybe a group of kids or whatever to go out and you do some kind of social media to show that, hey, the parks are open, they're safe. This site is, this slide is safe for, you know, for this age group, kids or whatever, so.
Thank you for that suggestion. No, so we bounced around a couple of different ideas, even whenever we interviewed Jeff and we were just kind of in the dreaming stages of the rec complex, like one of the ones he had talked about were, you know, could you have like a home run derby even like for adults? Like that's what I'm talking about, whatever, it's like, okay, can we just make it, okay, here's an, an opportunity for you to come to the rec complex, we'll have more of our staff there, here are just kind of like organized activities that we could potentially do. I'm picturing still, and Kylie's going to have to follow me on post over there, like having food trucks there, having like ice cream on site, like making them into like true grand openings versus just ribbon cutting, it's open, thanks so much, and let's move on to the next thing. At, I mean, city park, I've bounced around the idea of having kind of like a soft open for members in the community that have children with disabilities, since that's a big feature that we have there. We've, hold on, I guess we have.
Just like the day at the park, like having a movie night at the park with like Shelby said, food trucks, different things, just to kind of show them that there are so many different things you can do and to have a full day of events. So if you're into sports, you can come to the home run derby. If you just want to relax, you can come to the movie night, so just that's for.
If you're hot, you can go to the splash pad.
And it's for people of all abilities and everyone can enjoy this, it's not just for a certain group of people.
And as I say, the other conversations that we have had is, you know, beyond the grand opening, is what does our programming look like? Like that is obviously an intent behind, you know, the expansive amount of renovations. Obviously, we've talked about doing like pickleball lessons, and then what does that look like when we start working on like pickleball leagues, you know, out of there? Jeff has been working really hard the last couple of weeks, doing demos on like scheduling software and so how, you know, because we've had a lot, we've actually had that question a lot, like how will I be able to like reserve a pickleball court? So we've been having internal conversations on our policies, you know, obviously we want these open to the community, we sense there's going to be a significant, I mean, these were backlog, I guess, but a lot of people showing up to use a, you know, use the pickleball courts. What if we have a line of people when there's no open court? So like, will you have the ability to, you know, reserve a court? Will we be able to reserve, you know, let's say we allow four of the courts to be reserved, but two of them will always remain just first come, first served. You know, you play two games and then you, you know, rotate out, like those are the policies. Again, things that we've never had to deal with because we've not had these amenities before, but those are some of the things that we've been talking about. We, at the park, we've talked about doing obviously like a, maybe like a concert in the park series, you know, with the new amphitheater. We talked about that initially, I told Shelby, I'm like, hey, timeout, can we maybe at least wait till the fall, till the grass gets a better established, you know, in there? So before we invite a whole lot of people to put out blankets on the ground, you know, out there by the amphitheater and vitamin, let's get a, you know, a good strong, you know, root base into our grass. But again, so we're talking about whether it's offering like yoga in the park, we could do that under the pavilion shelter. So other programming events that we can now facilitate with nicer amenities beyond the, yes, obviously we've had a lot of conversations about the great openings, but it's just really getting the people into the park space that is so new and so awesome with different things that, like I said before, we wouldn't have been able to offer.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Has there been any talk about putting any kind of security cameras around the playground? I mean, I just drove around today and I was like, it looks really awesome. Hope it stays that way.
Yes, it's not in the budget, but it's likely going to happen in some capacity.
All right, do we have a motion at this time to recess for a work session?
I'll make a motion to recess for a work session.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Councilman Nider?
Yes. Yes.
Council LeNewberry?
Yes.
Council LeDew?
Yes.
All right, we are in recess for a work session.
Do you want to rearrange or not?
Yeah, I like Newberry's taste in the sun. Really, I'm not looking over striving around this day. I feel like we're working.
No, we're not done with that.
Friday, I had a guy go and rest, and I just happened to look at my office window there at the house, and he was like looking at my gutters, and I was like, dude.
Sorry, I just.